As Forward City Council Subcommittee on Economic Development Tourism will now be called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselor Reposo?
Here.
Counselor Sampson?
Here.
Chair Ponton?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda this evening is citizens' input. Is there anybody here on citizens' input pertaining to this agenda, these agenda items? Anything written or submitted? Hearing none. Next order of business is the minutes from the November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Minutes has been made by Counselor Reposo, seconded by Counselor Washington. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item three is a resolution for the Committee on Economic Development and Tourism. To meet with community arts organizations to provide a two thousand and twenty-three year end review and plans for two thousand and twenty-four. I'll read the resolution that was referred to the committee. Resolution was made by Counselor Reposo. Whereas a community organizations such as Creative Arts Network, Viva Fall River, and others have put on many different exciting events in two thousand and twenty-three, and whereas many of these events were well-attended and enjoyed by all, and whereas these efforts should continue to be supported and highlighted, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Economic Development Tourism invite these community organizations to discuss their two thousand and twenty-three year end review, share ideas for two thousand and twenty-four, and how they can further support their efforts to benefit residents of the city of Fall River. That was made by, resolution was adopted by the council and sent to the subcommittee. I'll invite the individuals who were invited to the meeting to the table at this time. We did invite Mike O'Sullivan, CEO of the South Coast Chamber, Patty Rigo, Executive Director of Viva Fall River, Ashley Ochino, Executive Director of Forward Arts and Culture Coalition, Charlie Demany from the Veterans Advisory Council, Sandy Dennis and Dave Dennis from Creative Arts Network, Roxanne Longstone from Creative Community Vision, and Christine Tyrell, Director of Strategic Partnerships at Battleship Cove. We did invite many. Some folks could attend, some couldn't. We did receive a communication from Ms. Rigo from Viva Fall River saying she had a personal matter to attend, did originally intend to be here but can't be here at this time. So the purpose of the resolution, I'd recognize Counselor Reposo if he wants to speak on the resolution first.
Yeah, real, real brief, like similar to my resolution last year at this time, was to review the exciting events that we've had in the past year, highlight this, in this channel, a way to bring to fore to the residents some of the good things that are happening, and then to highlight some of the things looking forward ahead in two thousand and twenty-four. So I'll defer to the, our guests here.
And before we do, if she's just, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Dave Dennis, one thirty-two Highland Avenue, Fall River.
Sandy Dennis.
One thirty-two Highland Avenue, Fall River.
Michael Sullivan, two hundred Pecassett Street, Fall River.
Ashley Ochino, two hundred Pecassett Street, Fall River.
Okay, I'm sorry I missed.
That's okay, I was, I was speaking with Lauren at the time and I didn't get a chance to.
All right, I'm happy you didn't hear it then. Okay, Mr. Dennis, would you like to go first? I think it'd be best, or Mr. and Mrs. Dennis, would you like to go first?
I'll go first.
That'd be great.
Basically, we emailed everybody our year-end report. You should have all gotten one. This brochure, and then I will hand each one of you out on some topics that we'll discuss tonight. Lauren, you can have one for the pile. So basically, twenty-
If you can just move, Ms. Dennis, the microphone to you so we can, the community can hear. Thank you.
Thanks for being down here. Twenty twenty-three, we had some major accomplishments. The first one was the Mass Memories Roadshow that we did with Boston. It was at DCR Heritage State Park. It was a great day and a great opportunity for the people of Fall River to showcase who they are and get their items and stories memorized, memorized in Boston Library. So that was a really good day, it was a fun day. And then the second big accomplish that we, accomplishment that we had was the Cultural Tourism Conference. Again, that was held at DCR Heritage State Park. And the reason that we hold many of our events down there is because it is the Designated Waterfront Cultural District, so we try to have as much down in that area as we can to support it and try to build that area, especially for tourism and for the economic development. And we feel that's where pretty much all the activity is going to be happening. We've thought that for many years, that's why we've always kind of focused on the waterfront with our things. We also did the Cultural Tourism Map. We did that years ago, I'm sure you've all gotten a copy of it. And basically, it acts as another tourism guide for people that come into the city, and it has all of our cultural sites on there. And then, this is the poster, we don't have any more of the maps because they've all been handed out, but the map has, on the back of this, it's a little bit smaller, but on the back it has a map and it lists all of the organization's historic sites on there so that people can go and hopefully patronize them. So this was done. We also did the Cultural District brochure. That's going to be on our two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four things to do because we need to update it. I'm sure you've all seen this and gotten this as well at some point over the last year or so, but this is going to be updated. We are working on a new logo for the Waterfront Cultural District, so it's going to be implemented on this brochure for the Waterfront Cultural District. We, we did receive an ARPA grant last year. We applied for many facets of it. We applied for, I believe it was like a hundred and ninety-one thousand to include tourism, to include money for the Cultural District, to include money for a specific mural, and then for the hydrangea project. Unfortunately, we only got one component of that, so for twenty-five dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars, and that was just for the Hortensia Project. That project will start in April and will end in June, so all of that ARPA money will be spent relatively soon and quick. Let's see, two thousand and twenty-three. If you refer to your year-end report, it has most of what we did in two thousand and twenty-three, a lot of our community affiliations, the tourism and marketing, which has always been a part of our mission for the last ten years. The Harvard Magazine, that was featured. We hosted Porter, hosted Nell Porter Brown to the city. We spent a whole half a day with her, bringing her to different cultural organizations and introducing her to the executive directors there, and she did a really nice story about Fall River. We also met with another film crew and went over a lot of Fall River things on the waterfront. They did the Amazon video, I don't know if you've seen that just recently, but we met with them to do some introductions and tell them a little bit about, about the city. Other events and projects outside of what's in this brochure, city tours, people that we've hosted, the waterfront tourism plan that we have, it's being finalized in two thousand and twenty-four. It's an action plan, and it's primarily for the Waterfront Cultural District. We've done a lot of youth outreach over the last year, actually last several years, but last year especially, we worked with CFC, with the kids, we did a Flag Day ceremony with them, we've worked with BCC students, with their event planning and hospitality. We've been doing that since COVID, and it's enabled them to actually get their course credits because we acted as their sponsor to do virtual events during that, and we've continued to build that relationship now. We also participate in the virtual fair at BCC, and what that entails is you go up on a virtual, and all the different classes can come to your Zoom and talk to you about opportunities with your organizations. We work very closely with the event planning and hospitality class. Like I said, we have been doing that for many years, but last year, to our surprise, we ended up working with a student in the criminal justice class, and the professor said, you know, I don't know how we're going to connect our students to, you know, an art culture and tourism organization, but we did. So what I did as I introduced the student to Grace Girling at Recreation, and she did an amazing Art that Everby class there with a whole bunch of youth. So it, she did a fantastic job, and the kids really, really did enjoy it. And, you know, they, they're the underserved kids, kids that tend to get in a little bit of trouble, that need a little bit more direction, and they really did enjoy the class. So maybe it just inspired them to move on to something other than mischief. We also presented at the Community-Based Learning Opportunities class at BCC, and we at Durfee participate in the volunteer fair there, and we also have, in the past, participated in their project Red and Black with students as well. So we kind of do a lot of outreach when it comes to the youth organizations. But if you refer back again to this and our end-of-the-year report, it'll tell you a little bit about the hydrangea project and what we did last year. We're also working, started the interpretive board projects that will be completed in two thousand and twenty-four, so a lot of these projects will move right into the two thousand and twenty-four year from two thousand and twenty-three. We did the Urban Textile Fashion Show, which was awesome. It was down in the rail spur on the waterfront. They sent, MCC sent representatives down that day, and I will say they were very impressed by it and wished they hadn't had to leave that day and stay for the whole thing, but it was a great event. We did the Frederick Douglass reading, you know, what is the slave, the slave to the Fourth of July? We did Let Freedom Ring, and a lot of what we do, we've incorporated a lot of education and history into our, our events and our projects. We feel it's important for people to really understand history in general and to understand a little bit more about the history of Fall River. You'll see that in the Urban Textile Show, we worked with a lot of the textile manufacturers in the city of Fall River to try to bring awareness how many there still are, and they are not just local, they're worldwide. I mean, they're international distributors, and they're right here in our own city. Then we, let's see, just some of the pictures here just shows a little bit about the things that we did with the organizations that we did them with. Then we go into two thousand and twenty-four, and it's basically, it's a lot of the same as two thousand and twenty-three, working on projects, doing events. What happened is, you'll see, we do a lot more projects now than we do events because a lot of the earmarks have gone, and when we spoke to the delegation, they said they're not giving earmarks for events anymore, they're leaning more towards the projects. So although they're not giving earmarks, we are gearing, and we have been geared more towards a project basis, which still gets the word out, like the Hortensia Project, it also offers events. We'll be doing huge projects with that this year, the DOT property and at DCR. We're going to have a whole hydrangea garden up there. We will have the whole pollination gardens there, we'll have lectures on care and maintenance of these plants, teaching about pollination. We did have the Lego event, talked about pollination, it was, again, it was a huge success, we kind of oversold that event, so we're going to do more with that because people want it. So we're trying to offer what people want more of, and we pretty much survey every event that we have, so we know what they want, what they don't want, what they like, what they don't like, where they come from. We do a lot of research and development on demographics so we can, you know, implement what we do according to that. Let's see, you should have all received this as well, which is our new tourism initiative, and it's designed to ensure that Fall River is described accurately and effectively on state, regional, and national travel and tourism sites, and this is something that hasn't been done on a lot of these sites. So this is an initiative that we started in two thousand and twenty-four, and it will continue. This is going to kind of help the face of the city because there is a lot of misinformation out there on a lot of these sites, and we want to make sure that if someone is traveling and they go on these sites, that the Fall River information is accurate. I mean, there's nothing worse than going up on a site and then finding out that the city or town that you want to visit has wrong information out there.
Just as a point of information, do you communicate with the IT department at all, with the city's website? Is there any links?
We used to be on the city website, but they took us down.
Did they take everybody down or just you down?
Just us, apparently.
Okay, so, all right, well, we'll table that discussion, but that's a good point we should probably discuss, because I don't know how fair that is, but continue.
Because we, we will be revamping our website. The Waterfront Cultural District will be getting its own logo, it'll have its own Facebook page, and it would be nice to have it on the city website, like it was before, so people can access that.
And just for, if, if it's the will of the committee, if we want to get something to the mayor in terms of a communication on behalf of the subcommittee to encourage that all of our organizations that, you know, work in the community have the same equal share access, I think that's a good progress within the committee to send up to the mayor's office, so-
Thank you, that would be great.
We could maybe have that discussion. Yeah, we, yes, we can, we'll can, I'll, I'll make sure we acknowledge it before we go, but I don't want to let you lose momentum, Ms. Dennis.
That's okay, no, that's okay, I've got it all down, I don't lose my place. But the tourism initiative is, it's extremely important because it sets the image of Fall River. We don't want to set a bad image when people go up on websites and the information is wrong or the links aren't working, so we're going to be going through all the different sites through the Commonwealth and regionally to make sure that they are correct. This is our tenth anniversary, so we have been around for ten years. Proud to say we are self-sustaining, we are an all-volunteer organization, so we do a lot with very little, and we're kind of proud of that. And being able to do it in the climate that we've had with COVID and everything else, we feel is a huge, huge accomplishment. Like I said, we're doing a whole new refresh on our website. We are going to be doing an event April twentieth that I'm hoping that you will all support. It's called the Borden Request, and it's a mystery dinner. Basically, what will happen is people will be offered a dinner, and they will be seated at tables of six, and they will all get a puzzle, and it all, it tells the story of the Borden family and the people in the city, the prominent people of Fall River and the Fall River Line ships. So Mr. Borden has an unexpected death, people are coming for the reading of his will to the Fall River Line, they will get a puzzle to solve the mystery of his death, and whoever solves the puzzle first wins his inheritance. So we're encouraging people to come in period dress. It should be a fun night, it should be an interesting night, and it should be a historical night, so people will learn a little bit more about the Fall River Line and all the prominent families from Fall River back in the day. And that event will be held at DCR Heritage State Park. Like I said, we're going to be finishing some of the projects that weren't finished last year. We'll be doing, the ARPA funds will be depleted this year that we were given of the twenty-five dollars, twenty-five thou- thousand, twenty-five dollars, well, it could be twenty-five. Don't be surprised, twenty-five thousand dollars, which seems like a lot of money, but it really isn't for a project of that size. We will be doing a public art installation on the waterfront, we will be finishing a placemaking area on the waterfront, and we will be doing the installation of hopefully the interpretive boards in the Waterfront Cultural District. We have a plan with numerous infrastructure business and development and marketing tourism initiatives to improve the waterfront, we'll be working on that. Like I said, we'll be doing a lot of R and D this year. We're cleaning up a lot of stuff, adding a lot of new stuff to our portfolio, our Facebook page, our marketing materials, we do team meetings on a regular basis. We'll be holding our annual district-wide meeting, which usually is in August for the Cultural District, and everyone usually goes to that, all the department heads, the police department, fire department, the mayor usually comes to hear some of the major issues that are going on in the district, which we all know is parking, but now that they have the trolley, hopefully that will alleviate some of the parking issues with shuttle services. So we're hoping for that. And what we do is, we will ask representatives to come to update us on that stuff, like we'll ask the mayor's office to come, please update us on the trolley, you know, how they're planning on using it, is it a fee, is it not a fee, who pays, who doesn't pay, what we can use it for to alleviate some of the pressures that people have with parking. We'll continue our plantings, we'll continue our cleanups. We've addressed many, many safety issues already in the Cultural District. We've really kind of done a lot with the homeless, and we've pretty much kind of taken care of that issue. And Innuan Street is now a one-way street officially, which was a good thing, an accomplishment for us, and we'll continue our collaborations with our major partners.
Okay.
Did you want to add anything, Dave?
Yeah, Mr. Dennis, you want to add anything? Just move the microphone over to you if you can.
Pretty good job going through the list.
That was very well done, yes. She did a great job. Counselor Reposo?
I just had a question regarding the data you collect. I know last week we had a presentation regarding where people come from for these events, so I'm just curious what your data looks like as far as how far-reaching are some of these events and where are people coming from?
Well, our last event, we had someone from Connecticut, so Connecticut's been a furthest point for us. We do a lot of East Bay, a lot of people from the East Bay come to our events, Rhode Island come to our events, Boston, a few from Boston have come to our events, and we strategically target those markets, like we will strategically target for the Borden Request event, we will target New York because obviously the Fall River Line left from the New York Piers to come to Fall River into Boston, so we will look at promoting this event there, and at the same time as we promote that event, we know we need to think of, you know, weekend accommodations, because if someone's going to come to this event from New York or even Boston, we want to make sure we have plans for them to stay the weekend and then things for them to do the following Sunday. You know, maybe they can, you know, check out the Battleship, go out to breakfast, stay for lunch, or things like that, so we'll, we'll hook up with the hotels in the area to see what their availability is for that weekend.
Generally speaking, we try to focus on about a fifty-mile radius, more or less.
This event will probably focus a little bit further out, though.
Makes sense.
So we also, yeah, we also have other plans that we can share with you if they come to fruition for some cross-marketing with, with the Rhode Island marketplace. So I can't really talk about it right now, but there are things that we're working on already on that.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Sampson?
Thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
And I love how you incorporate the history of Fall River with everything you do, I just love that. You're a nonprofit, right? You're a certified nonprofit.
Yeah.
How long have, you're a five oh one C three, how long have you been a nonprofit for?
Nineteen seventeen, I'm sorry, twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen, okay, and you've been-
April twenty seventeen.
So you've been a nonprofit for a long time. I'm curious, because you're not funded, you're not, you don't have a funding stream, you've got twenty-five thousand dollars, but there is no funding mechanism that you guys currently have, right?
Well, we would like for the city to fund the Cultural District this year. I mean, we would like to have some of that money in the budget for the Waterfront Cultural District, which is a separate funding from Creative Arts Network. It goes to the Cultural District and is spent in the Cultural District only.
I'm, I'm just amazed that you've done a lot with a little, and you maintain a very website that's-
It's going to be changing.
It's, it's amazing, though. How do you, what, how do you pay for that?
Volunteers.
It's volunteer-
We, we pay for it through grants. The website, we pay on our own, any extra money that we get from things that we do, we'll pay for the website. We're very creative, we work very hard trying to get funding. We do do a lot with very little. We don't pay anyone, so all the money that we get goes right back into the community or the website or the Facebook, any technology that we have, so, you know, we've been fortunate, the state's been very good to us, I have to say, MCC. We don't get anything from Lot, we've tried over and over and over again, and we've always had tourism as part of our mission, but we'll keep trying.
Sometimes when you do so good, it's like, ah, they don't need the, they don't need something, they don't, they don't, but I-
Well, we come from a sales background, so it's called putting the bag on.
Yeah.
We'll be putting the bag on.
Just a few more questions I have. You work with youth, I'm all about the young people, and I love that. Have you worked or reached out to, I think I asked this at the other meeting, Yacht is a group in the cities?
Yeah, we have, in fact, they participated in the textile event, they did.
They did, I just always want to incorporate them.
And we made, yeah, and we made a point of making sure they met the people that came from MCC.
Okay.
So we, we made a point that we did the introductions so that they could meet them and understand they're another revenue source for them, so we, we work, yeah, we try to kind of hook people up with, you know, some of the, because it's hard for them to get funding, too.
Yeah, really hard, and they're, for everyone's information, they're an art group that focuses on young people within the city, another volunteer-based group, so I appreciate that. They have been around for quite a while. Sue Wolfson runs that group, and she does an amazing job. You know, is there a collaborative effort that are doing with the art groups that you see, or could we do better, or what could we do to help that collaboration? Is there something that we could do better? I mean, there, there's, you know, I know my colleague, Counsel Pereira, has talked about this, it's, it's kind of fractured, each group is doing a lot, and so how do we get that to come together and maybe, is there something that we could do? Is there something that could be done better? I think Counsel Schipperstein, Cliff Mont, said getting you on that website would be important, but, and needed, but what, is there something else we could do or that you see is an issue or not an issue?
I mean, I think we all do something different.
Yes.
And I, I think that, like, we, we do different things than other organizations. I mean, we collaborate with a lot of the art and culture organizations, we have a good reputation and a good working relationship with, you know, Lafayette Durfee House, the Art Association, DCR, Historical Society, so we build on those relationships, and we do a lot of historical things, like big projects, historical projects, educational projects, and I can't speak for the other organizations, but I, I think we do different things.
Yeah, it's clearly-
And I think that maybe that coordination would have to come from the support of the administration and the council, you know, to actively support what we all do, you know, I noticed like, and I notice Facebook a lot, there's a lot of things that, you know, don't get supported that we put up there, they don't get shared, they don't get tagged, they don't get liked, they don't, you know, I don't see, you know, a CAN event on someone else's web, they don't pull the information and put it up there, so, I mean, there's only so much we can do as an organization, but I think it needs to come from- But I think it needs to come from the administration and our council and our delegation to support everybody. You know, selected groups and organizations. I think if they, if you truly, truly, truly believe in art, culture, tourism, economic development, and there are organizations out there doing it, you need to actively be supporting all of them equally. That's how I feel.
I appreciate that. And I couldn't agree more. I, I do see that each group is doing something unique. Beva does something unique, Frac does something unique, YAH does something unique. You guys do something unique. And so how do we support all of that? I think.
I don't think we, it's, I don't, I don't know that it's our responsibility to do that because it would be like asking Burger King, McDonald's, and Wendy's to sit at the table and say, okay, I want you three burger places to really work together and come up with a plan and decide how you're going to. It's competition. So I don't know that the three of them are going to sit at a table and start brainstorming how, you know, they're all going to come up with a new burger that's called the Mc Burger King Wendy Burger.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I respectfully may disagree with that a little bit. In the mental health world, I think all the mental health agencies, although maybe pulling from the same mental health population, we try to support each other's ideas because we just want to see each other getting better. And I see that in the arts community, everybody wants to support the arts. Everyone has a passion for the arts. Ashley is so passionate about what she does and Patty's so passionate and you're so passionate, so. And it's different. And so I don't look at it as competing. I look at it as supporting each other. And how can we support each other's mission? Because it does seem a little different. And so, um, and that's what I'm looking at. And also, do you, so I guess the answer, you answer me, you guys don't share data. So the data that's collected, you guys don't share that. And so maybe that's something that could be helpful in the future is sharing each other's data and saying, you know, what did, you know, this is what we came up with. I mean, we just paid a ton of money, fifty thousand dollars for tourism data. I think that you should be able to see that data and how that could be useful to you. And, and vice versa, the data that you're collecting, how that could be useful. I don't see it as a competition, more as a collaborative effort. But however, we can be more helpful with that on our end. Aye, yeh, thank you.
Thank you, Consulor. Uh, thank you very much. Mr. O'Sullivan.
I'm going to let Ashley speak because in the arts world, that's.
Very good, Ashley.
All right. So, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for, for having us to speak and to highlight. It's, it's pretty exciting. And so some of the things that I'll highlight from the Fall River Arts and Culture Coalition, known as FRAC. Twenty twenty-three was an outstanding year for us. It was, we accomplished a lot, both within the city aesthetically, but also economically within the arts. Some of the things that we did was we worked with the city on the call for arts that they did for the Blue Cross Blue Shield Fitness Court that's at Britland Park. We helped manage the call for artists that ended up selecting Abigail Collins, artwork that went up on that fitness equipment. During the fall months, we empowered six Fall River residents as apprentices on our parking garage mural project that we did. And also as part of that mural project, we handed out two five-thousand-dollar grants to the Health First Center and to recreation for them to do their own mural projects later on in twenty twenty-four. And so between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, we injected thirty-seven thousand dollars into the creative economy to sixteen visionaries through grants. We also provided twelve free workshops in partnership with different organizations such as Practice Best Practice, Grimshaw Giddiwitz Art Gallery at Bristol Community College, the Business Solutions and Partnerships Department at Bristol Community College. And they covered topics such as project planning, marketing, budgeting, and grant writing. And so these workshops are very essential for being able to equip a creative person to thrive financially in their artistic endeavors. We do have more, actually, I'll get to it later in my notes. I'm not going to jump ahead. Stay on track here. We also in, at the end of twenty twenty-three, launched our ignition space at three forty-one South Main Street. And then we opened our location at forty-four Troy Street. Both of these locations actually saw investment by the landlords to renovate their properties to make these projects come to reality. And so, again, the ignition space is our commitment to accessibility and resources. It provides a communal space for local art exhibitions, programming, meetings, networking, and more. And there's a great synergy that happens within the building known as Gather. You can see it right over the, across the street here. And that synergy is between Frac and our neighbors, the Fall River Museum of Contemporary Art. Though we are in different spaces, our programs amplify each other and the audiences as well. We also have co-hosted, as Consulor Reposa has mentioned, a variety of events that happened throughout the year where we engaged thousands of people. Some of those events included We Heart Fall River, which features over forty community, community organizations and forty local makers. We again participated in summer evenings in the park, picnics on the pier, third Fridays at the gates, and thanks, miss. Even though weather, weather was cold and windy, but people came out in droves. I was, I was actually very impressed. So all of these events are meant to foster a dynamic and interconnected arts community here in Fall River, where also the creative sector is given the opportunity for their small business to thrive. Thanks to generous support from a Fall River ARPA grant, we were able to launch our South Coast Creative Arts Lab, a program designed in partnership with the Narrow Center for the Arts and Fall River Public Schools. It's a hands-on initiative tailored for seventh and eighth grade students that offers a safe and welcoming space for youth to gather after school to strengthen their visual and performing arts skills. Enrolled students enjoy immersive activities, hands-on music lessons, art lessons. And we do invite you and to come and visit the program as it's taking place on Tuesdays and Thursdays. But we also would love to see you join us for our end-of-session celebration in early June, where the students will showcase their remarkable talents. And as part of this holistic program, we also provide movement, mindfulness, yoga, snacks. And students also now go home with groceries from the Fall River Food Pantry as well every week. We do realize that food insecurity is, is an issue here. As we stride into twenty twenty-four, we have many exciting initiatives coming up and we already have some accomplishments as well. One of the things that we have kicked off is our Bristol County ARPA-supported Artist Recovery Program. In May, we will be announcing the ten artists that have been selected for capacity-building grants. They will receive training that will help them empower their artistic careers. And this program is developed in collaboration with Assets for Artists, which is an organization that has been working across New England to provide artist training for small businesses. And as our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion remains steadfast, we are rolling out new workshops this spring. Our workshops include Unpacking Stigma, which will be hosted in partnership with the Katie Brown Educational Programs, and A Seat at the Table, which will be in partnership with Bristol Black Collective and the Fall River YMCA. Both of these workshops will be free. Unpacking Stigma will be virtual. And A Seat at the Table will be hosted at the YMCA. It will be part of their Spring Two session. And dinner and childcare will be provided for that one. We will again continue our summer events. We will be back for eight weeks at Summer Evenings in the Park. And we will also be working with the city on their Bloomberg Philanthropies Grant that they received to do a mural on asphalt here in the city and surveying around public safety. Frac will again partner with the Fabric Arts Festival. We're thrilled to again collaborate with them and to work with galleries and studios like the Greater Fall River Art Association, Shane Landing Studios, Smokestack Studios, Craftyish, Rocks Art, Brian Fox, The Narrows, Groundwork, and SoCo Art Labs to present Fall River Open Studios. This annual event draws hundreds into the studio's most creative spaces and it will take place in October. It's a wonderful opportunity for local residents and for tourists alike to meet our local artists. And starting in late twenty twenty-four, Frac and the Pocasset Wampanoag Tribe of Massachusetts and Rhode Island, Bristol and Bristol Community College, will begin a multi-year project to uncover the Quikashan River's hidden history along three-point-five miles using art, writing, and community events visually tracing the river's path. Frac was lucky to receive one of fifteen spatial justice grants out of eighty-eight applications from the New England Foundation for the Arts. As we look ahead, I do want to extend my gratitude to the almost two hundred coalition members of Frac. And I thank the city for their ongoing support and enthusiasm.
Thank you. Consulor Sampson.
Again, I love the stuff that you're doing with kids. I, it's so important to keep kids invested in the community and community connectivity is everything for our future. How many kids are in that program?
So our after-school program, this semester, we increased to twenty-four, twenty-five students. No, twenty-four students, I'm sorry, it's equally split there. It's twenty-four students. And so that goes up from twenty, which was what our original ARPA application was for.
Nice. And is it, like, do, do they fluctuate? So twenty-five students and then twenty, is it twenty-five at a time or just twenty-five in total?
It's, it's a session and each session's about fifteen weeks. And so twenty-five would enroll for that fifteen weeks. And so when we have a new session start, it's done by lottery. But previous students are allowed to join back in if they want to. So we have seen repeat students participate in the program as well.
Nice. And do you have a total number of how many students you've helped out?
So we have done forty, forty, it would be sixty-five because we're in our third session right now.
Nice. And do you work with YAH as well?
We have.
You have worked with YAH?
Yes, we have.
You've wanted to promote them because they're another.
We have.
I just want everyone to work with YAH.
Yep, we have. And so some of the things that we're doing this year, coming up with them in particular, is they'll be at the We Heart Fall River Festival. They'll be one of the organizations there. But they also will be working with the artist on the asphalt mural that I mentioned that the city received the Bloomberg, Bloomberg Grant for. There'll be apprentices for that project.
Again, great, just extremely different than what the other art group is doing. And then how do we, how do we promote it all? But good job. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Sullivan, you want to comment on anything before we go to the next order of business here?
I would just say that we'd be open to the idea of collaboration. We always have been and, and we always will be.
With other organizations?
With other organizations.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we've always been. Frac has been here since two thousand and nineteen. And it's been, it's always an open, even though the chamber is a membership-driven organization, Frac is not. And so if artists want to participate, they can, they can just come.
And actually, that's, so Consulor, I would actually like to invite you to attend a Frac meeting at your convenience. I know you both have, at your convenience, attended Frac meetings in the past and I appreciate that. We meet the second Monday every month at five o'clock and we meet at rotating locations around the city. So it's, it is publicly listed, but I can tell you this month, we're meeting at one forty-five Globe Street, which is the SoCo Art Labs. And I believe next month, we are meeting at Craftyish on Anawan Street.
I personally can't make that, that next meeting, but I can do the next one most likely. So if you want to send over to me, I can give you my email before you leave your agenda. So I can get on it. We can communicate. I'd like to.
Yep, everyone's always welcome to our Frac meetings. That's something I want to make sure every, everybody is always welcome.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Now, do you have access? Are, are your events listed on the website? Do you have equal access to help promote your events with the city?
I, I, I do feel that I, I have equal access. I mean, the way that I've been promoting my events is, like as you said, like through Facebook and other, and Eventbrite and other channels like that. So yes, I, I do feel that my, my events are seen by the audience that I'm intending to, to reach. But if I could go back and, and answer one of the questions that was asked earlier about how, how could the city support in a way that, honestly, it's financially. It's, it's some type of financial input towards arts and culture in the city. And, and I mean, that's for the city to decide how that would be broken up. But we all know that we enjoy the different festivals and the events and everything that happens in the city. And they all have a price tag to them. So.
Okay. So just, and thank you for that good guess, Mr. O'Sullivan.
I just want to add one thing. If you, if you look at other cities of similar size to Fall River, Bedford, Worcester's larger, but it's a similar concept. Many of those use a portion of their meals tax or their hotels tax is actually, is, is committed every year to arts and culture and in some cases to tourism. So that there's a fixed amount or a minimum fixed amount essentially that goes there. And, and I think somewhere down the road, it would make a lot of sense for Fall River to look at that, you know, amongst a lot of other financial pressures.
And I, I appreciate that. I, I'll tell you, I've, I've been doing some research and maybe if it comes out of a resolution from this committee or I'll file one. I'm still doing some additional homework on it. But I happened to be cited in the state of Vermont for a parking violation. And I, I, my, my meter extended and I got a twenty-five-dollar fee. And they had the option to either pay the municipality or take that, there was a sticker on it. And they said, you can take that twenty-five dollars and you can rebate it at a local small business, right? And it was backed by a nonprofit organization who I guess essentially would pay the city their fee, but it would be backed by a revenue source from a nonprofit who might be getting grants to be able to incentivize people to shop, shop local, right? So I, I, I think that comes along the lines of what you're trying to say. You know, I, I recognize that the governor has also given cities and towns the ability to raise their meals tax, I believe, to bring in new additional revenue. I don't know what the mayor's planning to do with that. If he does, a discussion could be worthy of bringing that up to him for, for these organizations.
I don't think that's passed yet, but it's.
I don't think it's passed the great general court, but I think the governor is trying to push it through her fiscal budget yet.
If you don't mind saying, what town in Vermont was it? So we can take a look.
Oh, it's way up there. But I, I forget. I, I can get back to you on that. I'll text you on that or, or I'll email you. But I'll, I'll, I'll just tell you that it was, it was neat. I actually have a picture of it in my phone that I got. It was a sticker and you, you don't have to pay the twenty-five dollars if you shop local to a small business. I'm not talking about Target or Walmart. I'm talking about like a mom and pop shop on South Main Street in Fall River. So I, I'm doing some additional research. I'll be happy to, I'm sure it'll come to this committee for vetting or another committee for vetting, but it's certainly something I'm looking into getting more details on.
I would love to learn more about that.
Yeah. So before we adjourn this subcommittee meeting, there was, of course.
That's an issue that's come up many, many, many times.
Which is?
Over the years, but meal tax in the city. Frankly, nothing that we're aware of.
Right.
It's not, it's nothing new. Let's be brought up again, but it's quite ridiculous. You mentioned numerous times this, some type of effort of a revenue, or organizations that we all do. So I, I think it's, you know, probably time to do something.
So I, I, I agree. So there's actually been three things. And, you know, this was a very well-intended resolution and I don't want it to just die in the committee or just get referred back to the council with no action, which I don't even necessarily think action's necessary. But there was a couple of things that came to light and I'd like to engage my colleagues on this. First thing is, it would be wise for this committee as a whole to possibly discuss adopting a motion to send a letter to the mayor and the IT department to offer opportunity for Creative Arts Network and all organizations to be, to have the ability to have a link on the city website to help promote their events. Any, any idea of a motion on that, Consulor?
I'd like to make a motion to, that we send a letter to the mayor and the IT to do exactly what you just said.
To do exactly what I said. So a motion has been made by Consulor Sampson to send a letter to the mayor and the IT department to offer an opportunity for community organizations who put on events such as Creative Arts Network, Beva Fall River, and other organizations to make sure that their events are promoted on the city website. Motion has been made by Consulor Sampson.
Can I extend that? Can I add social media platforms as well to that motion?
We won't even need to do that. We'll just make sure we say that it includes social media platforms as well. Has been made by Consulor Sampson, seconded by Consulor Reposa. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. There was another opt, uh, discussion that was had in this resolution that there was some hope to possibly get some waterfront for the city to fund the waterfront cultural district for next fiscal year. That's been a hope. Is there any appetite from the council to send a communication to the full council? To possibly send a communication to the mayor to do something like that?
Motion so made?
Motion made by Consulor Reposo to urge the, send another, I guess, another communication from this committee to the mayor to possibly, and urge him and his finance team to fund the waterfront cultural district in this coming fiscal year. Motion has been made by Consulor Reposa, seconded by Consulor Sampson. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Anything further? Consulor Reposa.
So, and I'll, we'll add to the communication list today. Let's reinvestigate the conversation about the meals tax. So I'll make a motion to refer a communication to the mayor and the finance team as well to look at the meals tax and how that could benefit arts and culture and tourism in our city.
Can I just say something? It's usually hotel and meals tax that goes towards tourism.
Hotel and meals tax.
Hotel and, yeah.
Got it.
Hotel and meals tax usually goes towards tourism in lots of cities and towns.
Yes.
Got it.
That's right. Just as a point of clarification. It's probably best on that to refer, all these letters are getting referred, by the way, to the full council to then refer it to the mayor for action. That might be worthy of a stronger resolution for the Committee on Finance to convene.
Fair enough.
Uh, to discuss because it is financially driven. So, but your motion is to, say that again, Consul, please? Sorry. Write it down.
Communication to encourage the administration to look at the hotel and meals tax and how, which we can then in turn support arts, culture, and tourism initiatives in the city.
With a possible referral to the Committee on Finance for discussion?
Correct. Motion made.
Motion has been made by Consul Reposa, seconded by Consul Sampson. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. A lot has been accomplished in this committee on economic development and tourism tonight and we hope that we can see some positive momentum moving forward as a result of it. There's no further action before this committee.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Good night. Thanks.